We're gonna get right into department updates. Let's start back there in the back. How's the rec center going, real quick?
Real quick, we've got baseball registration that started. It started yesterday. We'll run it through, early registration through February 24th, and then late registration through 25th and 28th. We'll have a skills evaluation and draft on March 2nd. And then opening day for everybody will be March 23rd, Saturday, March 23rd, provided it's not raining. Last thing, we're having a blood drive tomorrow at the community center. Starts at 9:00 a.m., so please, if you can make it out, please come and donate blood. So, thank you.
Did they get the breaker, the main breaker we had kicked out the other morning, and we're gonna have to readjust the overload on it?
Should have next week.
He's at Yellowstone this week, he was on vacation.
Okay, bless his heart. Alright. ELC, anything new happening there?
Nothing happening. You can't get an answer about Fay's money for Irma? It's a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars that were due. I haven't seen the check or any information from him yet. Almigwise, we got the check, but we don't have the magic piece of paper with Brian Kemper, Nathan Deal's name on it. So, it's the first time we ever got the check before the money, I mean, the letter.
Okay. Alright, anything new on grants or generators or anything like that?
Nothing new since last month, no.
Okay. Alright.
Well, we are gonna add, we're gonna have it in our March 1st for three more that we're doing for Carlin Road, the one at Tate, and Sloan had one die at Grandview, the generator we had, so we're gonna put that one in there too.
The one at Grandview, he did get it up and running, had put some injectors in it, got it up and running. He wanted me to come out there and check the hertz on it because of the lights were going high and low, high and low. But he said the RPMs are steady, so I'll be able to check it out. But it's probably, those things, what, about eighteen years old? Or older, or little?
Yeah, it goes from nineteen ninety-nine.
So, he did get the injectors put back in?
He got the injectors put back in, it doesn't make any difference.
I'm gonna try to get you a new one. I don't know if they'll go for that one, but they would try. It's just paperwork.
Alright. Phillip?
Uh, we said seventy-seven meters in two thousand and eighteen. That's seventeen more than we said, twenty seventeen. We got Jones Mountain done in the middle of the summer, and still waiting on Gilmer to tie on. No new update on Grandview yet. It's still crawling along, waiting on the Salvation Army and current season, what have you to get there. Get all the property hashed out, and so we can get moving on that. But I think they moved forward a little bit on the intake. We went down before Christmas and walked, and found an access road instead of having to cut a road in. Going down the side of the mountain, we found the access road that goes around the bottom of the lake. And Chris was gonna get with the Salvation Army and see if we could upgrade that road, and if we up kept it, if we could use it.
Yeah. So... Y'all got any questions so far?
Rodney, and of course now Rodney has been appointed as the full director of planning and development. Linda Casey is now our new sole erosion, what was it? I can't remember what the title was on that.
Land development.
Yeah, sole officer of land development. And Marshal Garrett's still in the office, and we will be having a new individual coming in in approximately two weeks to fill Linda's position there. So, and Linda will still be over the bearing line board, she'll still be director of that, so got that coming on. You got anything?
Just quickly, revenues for planning and development were up eleven percent last year. We're adjusting to all the due roles and assignments, and getting things straightened out. Other than that, looking forward to a good year. We've already got some zoning hearings coming up. Got some things brewing in the works, so just looking forward to a good year.
Alright.
Congrats on your new position.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, or condolences. Alright. Roy, how's the tax office going?
Wide open. It's first of the year, time for everybody to do returns on their property. Any new changes that you need to let us know about, now's the time for this year to digest.
How long have they got till, what's the deadline?
April 1st. Between January 1st and April 1st is the return period. One of the things that Stephanie does is she mails out personal property return forms to all of our current accounts, and that's boat, businesses, things of that nature. Make sure when you get those, if everything's the same, put on there the same, and drop it back by to us. If there's any changes, make sure and let us know. And that's the reason we send those out, is because we know that personal property is bound to change. You might trade bass boats, you might trade in a uniloder on a different type of track hole, but we're not gonna know unless you tell us. So, we just try to keep it accurate, and encourage everybody to make those returns, so we'll know what the status of those accounts are.
When did she mail those out?
We tried to get those out the last week of December, that way they're in the mailbox and doesn't January the 1st.
Okay, thanks.
And so far, we're getting a good response from the public. A lot of walk-in traffic, a lot of people calling, a lot of things being sent back in, so we're getting a good response so far.
Darren had got tied up, he's not gonna make it in here. What's his collection percentage so far? Anybody know, anybody heard?
I was telling Fay earlier, the last few weeks, people have been lined up out the door, they've been on the phone, talking with us. So, I expect that it's probably been a good last few weeks at the end of the year for his office.
The last report we had was through, I think, the late November, and it was about at eighty-nine percent. But I don't have all the December numbers yet, so.
Okay. Alright. Well, while you're talking, go ahead. You got anything new on financials? I got your audit done?
We just finished budget, now you're talking about it. No, we don't have the audit done yet, but everything's going fine. And I will be meeting with Audrey later this month to do some planning.
Alright. Any questions for Ms. Fay? Sure. Thank you for coming today. What you got brewing?
Just not a whole lot. Finished up with December. We had about eighty-two, hundred thirty officer-involved calls, and then the officer-initiated calls for the month. Pretty busy during December. Again, a lot of it was dealing with, the biggest call we deal with is domestics. It's pretty tough during December. Also, we've had several thefts and burglaries over the last couple of months. Hopefully, we'll be bringing some of that to an end. We've got some folks that hopefully will be able to make a rest on the next couple of weeks with some of those. We have been able to get some of that property back for those victims. Courthouse, pretty slow for the month of December. Had a little over four thousand people scanned through the courthouse for the month, but nearly seventy thousand for the year. So, a lot of folks are, you know, coming and going to courthouse with about five hundred and seventy different court sessions that we were working during the month of December, so. Also, we're still hiring, I think currently we're down about six. We have got about nine going through our process at this time, but normally they'll cut probably in half or a little less, but things are looking up on that end as well, so. Been busy, but things are going well.
Well, I got Kim and Sloan, but I got some other stuff. Kim, go ahead. Give us an update right quick, I'm gonna hit you with some stuff.
Okay. Yeah, in two thousand and eighteen, we were able to pave thirty-one miles of road. That's a record year for us. And also, we were able to install a hundred and eleven drainage pipes throughout the county. So, actually, I mean, corrected a lot of drainage problems. Also, we...
The drainage pipes you were changing were either brought up one size or two sizes.
Yeah, we did. We also cleaned up over five hundred trees on the right-of-way. You know, a lot of those were dead trees due to the drought or whatever, and storms, and things of that nature. We did complete the parking lot at the Tate Depot last year. We hauled in seven hundred and forty tannam loads of dirt, which was donated, and then we gravelled it, you know, for our budget. But we took care of that also. Right now, we're mainly concentrating on the storm cleanup from the December night, you know, snow and ice. And I'm looking at probably a couple of weeks getting that cleaned up. Got a little behind due to the weather and the holidays and everything, but we're working on that right now.
You're running both chippers up on the mountain now, or just still got the other one on Cove Road?
Yes, we're running both chippers right now.
Okay.
One on Cove Road and then one on Monday.
Alright. The signs that you had down at fifty-three at Tate, Georgia, you guys were all involved in that thing.
Right.
Anybody getting reports, anything off the computer on that? That we give to the sheriff's department?
Yeah, Ben Nathan taught after we pulled them up, and the speed was, the average speed down there was forty miles an hour. I mean, we didn't have no high speed. I mean, there was maybe one or two, but there was no high speed. And then we can get the reports, but it was about forty-one to forty-first percent hour something, which it was equaled out to about average speed. It was forty-one miles an hour down through there.
Okay. Tell you what I need y'all to do then, if whoever, we get Nathan up and going with this system, I need that report turned into the sheriff's department.
Okay.
And Donnie, if you don't, or sheriff if you don't mind, just let them know who they need to turn it into, where y'all can keep listening to it, and we'll go ahead and get this thing processed. Now, that being said, being a state highway, we can't do that but two weeks at a time. We've got another area, well, I got Kim here, Gordon Road. Ms. Denny had had a request on Gordon Road for somebody, a group of people using it for a cut-through. We need to go ahead and see if we can install both of those signs on Gordon Road. I don't know what area, you know...
I'll give that name to you.
I've got it in the email.
Oh, did you?
I think it's around three seventy Gordon Road.
That's right, yes. And they had asked for a speed bump. I mean, do we do those, or does the sheriff?
We do, we do speed bumps, but the way we're handling it right now, if the individual that would like to have a speed bump, we're requesting them get a petition together. And that gives us something to look at to the fact. Everybody, not just the petition of everybody in the county, just a petition along everybody that lives along, the majority of people that live along that road, because they're the ones that's gonna be, have to deal with the speed bump.
I think this might take care of it. We can try and...
And the sheriff has also got us, one, had a petition going down at Bunch Court. And so, it's gonna be coming in here pretty quick. Also, I have had a conversation with Ms. Blandrum here in regard to maybe coming up with some sort of process as we go forward, because we don't wanna have a speed bump every time we turn around in Pickens County. But we need to put up the process if whomever is using these for cut-throughs or issues that we're having, need to put some sort of policy, I guess, to handle these. I like the petition policy. That way, at least everybody that lives along the road knows what's going on. They can either, you know, go for it or against as we go for these speed bumps, because they are rough, even though they're, the ones we use are federal highway administrative certified speed bumps. You will slow down to about three miles an hour, or if you get a sunroof, you will be through the top of the sunroof on them things, but...
We gotta look at two. We've got some of these big trucks going through them too.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a really big problem, I think, out there.
For the trucks?
For the trucks and the road.
Yeah. Well, we'll just have to, you know, take it in stride and see what we can do. Some of those trucks, in some areas, have got another area to go into if they would use that other area. That's up to them. Let's see, I'm gonna get to you in a minute, you just stay cool. The seventh, the seventh of this month, I'm meeting with Stan Hettin of Fannie County and Charlie Paris Gilmer in regard to the audiovisual courthouse. Not only our courthouse, but they want to talk about our courthouse, the Gilmer County courthouse, and the Fannie County courthouse. And I'm gonna give them a report on the two companies that we have dealt with, and what we're doing forward to them. And I haven't got to talk to the other two commissioners here, but the theory, the theory that we all had is to have three separate audiovisual units in each courthouse. It's confusing for the judges that are having to sit on the benches. If we could all work together, all three counties' courts together, and have the same audiovisual equipment in each courthouse, then Superior Court judge, magistrate judge, whatever, as they have to travel between each county would work better. I know Pickens has always had some issues with it. Gilmer's had some issues with our system, and I don't know if Fannin's even worked at all.
So, Rob, we did get the, your last guy that came over and looked at the audio system, and he's got all the audio going and all the cordless, all over there during the pay.
Okay.
So, all that is, last account I had, wasn't working. Just we need to look at the video for our system.
And he did, he did give me an update to the fact that we haven't bought them yet, but he was gonna have to buy some more. We'd had, I think, one headset that was actually working. He wants to look at buying other headsets. And my question to him, I didn't have a problem buying headsets for the equipment that we got, if they could be utilized in the new equipment that hopefully we'll be buying in the future. And we don't know what that price is gonna be, or what we're gonna do. I just don't wanna pay a high dollar for these headsets and throw them out the door, you know, a year down the road. So, he's trying to pull that together, but we got a meeting coming up on the seventh, discuss with the two other commissioners up in Gilmer County on this one issue, to give everybody a heads-up on that. Do you got any other thing with the road department?
One other thing, we have all the materials in to install the three-way stop down at Morley Crossroads and Little Creek Drive. So, we'll be doing that in about two weeks.
Alright, can we give the sheriff a heads-up on that?
I will.
Because we're putting up, we're putting up flashers. We got, they come in this week, like we put on Cove Road there at Plain Mountain. Solar, solar flashers, along with the equipment to go ahead and start getting that three-way stop installed on...
It's Little Creek Drive and Morley Crossroads.
Little Creek Drive and Morley Crossroads. It was that letter we received from the school system requesting that we looked into it, and the engineering is already done. And it, they did recommend a three-way stop there for the school buses coming out. So, that'll be, say, two weeks on that. And then, of course, you've still got some centerline striping in Wild Timber, and a few other places. This rain will ever give us a break. Especially on Bluebird Trail. You think she got that? Give us, before I turn it over to Sloan, give us an update on the salt shed and all that we got going on with the brine.
I got a message a while ago that the trusses was delivered. We've got the walls and the foundation ready, done on the salt barn. Got a guy coming Saturday, and the crew coming back to put the trusses on. And hopefully, the metal first of the weeks will, that will be done when we get the salt in. The equipment was shipped yesterday, should be here today or tomorrow. And once that's here, he asked me yesterday if the fourteenth, if they could come down, because they're coming from Ohio. And they'll be here two to three days for installation and training. And I told him I'd get back with him Friday, depending upon a better date, because I've still got some touch-up on our maker building that the brine maker goes in. And then, once that's done, I mean, and the equipment gets here, we'll be ready to start making brine. Hopefully, we're about seventy-five, eighty percent complete.
Are the tanks gonna be ready to start pumping the brine into it? Or are you just...
Yes, no, I've got the tanks plumbed in, and all we have to do is, the two tanks come in right before Christmas and after Christmas, and it was, the wind was blowing, so we couldn't stand them up, and then the rain. So, we got one more to stand up, and then it won't take an hour to plumb them in, and then they'll come in, and they'll plumb in into the brine mixer and the maker. So, we're about eighty percent complete.
Alright. And we had, I think we mentioned last month, we were having a request, two separate entities wanted to buy brine from Pickens County, even though we didn't, this is just a surprise to us. We didn't know we were gonna supply, but if they wanted...
We're not gonna sell to them this year.
No, no.
We're gonna, this is our trial.
Try a year, we'll get it done and go on.
You gotta get it better understanding and a handle on it before we can sell.
Any other questions for the chief of law? Sloan, you're up to that, son.
I'm almost asleep now.
I'm gonna go ahead and start with the total amount of calls. I'll do the dispatch report first. For this year, we had seventy-eight thousand, four forty-two total calls. Now, that's law enforcement, fire, ambulance service, dog calls, you know, whatever. That's just calls coming through, nine-one-one. We're showing for the fire department, fifty-six thirteen was our, that was the county calls. Volunteers, City of Jasper had three thousand, two eighty-six. Law enforcement, we're showing over sixty thousand calls. Sixty-two, sixty-seven. And then miscellaneous, we had eight thousand, three fifteen. One other report that we had pulled, it was, out of that eight thousand calls for the miscellaneous, four thousand, seventy-three were hang-up calls. I thought that was kinda interesting, which basically gets an all page. That sends the sheriff's department, sends us standing by, because we don't know what's going on. Ninety percent of the time, it's little Johnny learning how to use the phone, you know? A lot of your cell phones now, if you sit and hold a certain button for so long, get calls nine-one-one. So, I mean, you get that, and people don't even realize they've done it. But I thought that was pretty interesting, that there was four thousand, seventy-three hang-up calls. We did get our bid packets back for the fire trucks, for the equipment. Fire trucks should be, they'll be rolling in probably, it may be by the end of this month, maybe the middle of this month. We still have to do our final walkthrough with them. I sent some of y'all, I think, pictures of it. It's on the county fire Facebook page, the picture's on there. They're looking good. We'll have to do a final inspection before they come back. The tankers are gonna be about, probably another month to two months out before we get our super tankers in. Like I say, we did get the bid package back for the equipment, for the majority of the equipment. That doesn't, MES came in the cheapest as far as hose and nozzles and that type of equipment. So, we will be getting our equipment through MES. Carlin Road Station, matter of fact, I went by there yesterday. Most of the electrical, the plumbing's done. They now have the steps on the, on the side there. They've got those up. Just waiting to do a final weld on those, and they'll be ready for our second egress out in case the station catches on fire. Then we're in the living quarters, they'll be able to come out the top. Finally, was able to get in touch with Tater Made Alcestars. They were the ones that won the bid for the remounts. Finally got in touch with them, there's been some changes with them. I don't feel the best about them still, but they're the ones that won the bid. And they should be, she's supposed to be contacting me again this week, and they'll come and pick one of them up. I'm not sending both trucks out at a time. So, we'll be getting two of them remounted. And that's pretty much it, unless y'all have any more questions. And as far as the Carlin Road Station, you know, we may be another, if the weather cooperates, I think we'll be done a little bit quicker. But I would say with the way it keeps the rain and all that, because a lot of it's just gonna be us getting the road ready for an engine to come around that building and be put in there. I think it's gonna be the biggest thing we have left, pretty much. It's getting, letting the gravel settle and that type of stuff, so. We'll still be, maybe another couple of months, but other than that.
Okay. You have that? Go ahead.
What was the donation at Northside made to you for EMS?
The cardiac monitors.
Is that what it was?
Yes, they donated three cardiac monitors. They're fixing to donate three more.
Twelve leads, twelve lead cardiac monitors, wasn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not the AEDs, it's the actual twelve leads where we can...
Is that what you use this morning on our cadets?
It is. It is. One of them did get that placed on it, sure did. But the other three, the last I heard from Northside Cherokee, they were gonna replace all of them. And the other three should be in sometime in February, if not before.
Alright. Any other questions? Got a couple of other things, I thought of, the animal shelter. We had replaced the transfer switch at the animal shelter from a hundred, two hundred, a transfer switch. The reason why is because the generator there has went out. We have got an extra generator that was pulled out of the nine-one-one system, so we've moved that generator over there for the animal shelter as we get some concrete poured over there. And then, I think, we're gonna go ahead and pour a little pad and all out there at the animal shelter for a, for a way to bring the animals around to show them to the public whenever that comes in. And also, I'd just like to mention one other item. This is a thank you for Sheriff Frank Reynolds down in Cherokee County. We were able to acquire, Phillip and them were able to acquire a potable water tank trailer. Heaven forbid, we have a community that runs out of water. They had an extra one down there, and they have, I'm assuming, donated it to Pickens County. And we're having it cleaned and painted, the inside, very nice piece of equipment in the inside, but it's designed to haul potable water to locations for drinking water in case a water system goes down. And we would like to, and we're gonna probably do some photo ops to get the, get the thing back around. But I would like to thank Sheriff Frank Reynolds and his staff for pulling that off for us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Lisa, does you know of anything else?
We're good.
Ms. Blandrum? Ms. Fay? Anybody got any, okay, guys, anybody got any questions? Comments, answers? While y'all are here. Yes, ma'am?
The Dawson Eight Station, can you give an update on that?
Dawson Eight Station, we met with, we met with the volunteers at Dawson Eight on Monument Road last night. Went very well. Pickens and Dawson, the powers-to-be are working very closely together to make that transition as easy as possible, where it'll be a Pickens County Station number ten when everything is said and done. Chief Elrod and Tracy Weaver's up there for training dates and scheduling for up there. They're putting the numbers together, should be getting them individuals up there something today. We are still gonna work with close with Dawson County. We're finishing up the IGA, intergovernmental agreement. I already sent it back the third time. They should be finishing up on it next two weeks, because they don't meet till another two more weeks on the intergovernmental agreement. With that being said, the automatic aid should fall in place with that one. Still be the automatic aid, maybe just a few names might change. But other than that, that should be fine. So, that station would eventually be a station, Monument Road Station number ten. That's what it will be.
Excuse me, does that mean that we're primary and with mutual aid, Dawson comes in secondary?
That's correct. And then...
That will all be run out of automatic?
Automatic aid, all be run out of automatic aid. That way, that way both sides will be called out. And don't, people don't need to get confused to the fact that there's, in regard to Station, Station Ten, Station Eight slash Ten, the automatic aid agreement, we're having a map made of what particular area in Dawson County, Pickens County, Sunrise Ridge, Monument Road, what that station will be, for lack of a better term, responsible for, to where they're not... We don't want the volunteers to drive from there all the way over to Lake Lanier, but we need them to drive from there all the way over to Hinton. They're just volunteers, and there's gonna be about fourteen, sixteen of them up there, and get set back up like they're supposed to be doing.
Seven of them are wanting to go through the actual firefighter training.
Right.
So, they'll be able to dawn the turnout gear. And I don't foresee them squirting water inside, you know? It'll be more of an outside attack, but at least they'll have, they'll have, be able to have the turnout gear on and-
Do we provide that training here, or do they have to travel somewhere to get the training?
We provide it here.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, um, we're working on that training calendar now, um, so, they, I think, uh, Commissioner Jones had said, uh, we should have it done today to where they'll have a schedule of, of when we can get started. We're actually, we're all gonna open it up to any other volunteers that wanna go through it for the county, so some of the classes will be here at the O.C., but, uh, when we actually start working on pump training and that type of stuff, it'll be up there with their, so they've got their vehicles.
And, and, and they're not limited, the volunteers are not limited, they can, they can train here, or they can, some of them already started training over in Dawson County for that station, so, it's, it's all under state guidelines, and, uh, but, yeah, we don't, we're not, you know, we're not gonna make them all come here if they wanna go other places, they can if they want to. Any other questions?
Well, just, uh, you know, I mentioned when Sloan was talking about, uh, his, uh, equipment that you got from the hospital, we've, uh, been working out with, uh, Anix there at the old school, with the George Public Safety Training Center, we're actually in our third mandate, started this morning, we've got, uh, right at fifty, what am I, fifty? Uh, fifty cadets from across North Georgia that is attending this mandate class, um, so, things are going very well, not only are they doing the basic mandate, uh, what most others know as the police academy, uh, but there also been a lot of, uh, advanced training. Uh, we've had, uh, two domestic violence classes, uh, last month, we had, uh, two or three other advanced classes, and, and again, that's getting taught right here in Pickens County, so we're not having to travel outside the county to attend, uh, it's allowing us to, uh, on some of our recruiting and, uh, you know, some, having exposure to the other agencies is helping us as well, so, I just give you a little update on that, that's, that's working out well, and, and Sloan and his guys have been great, uh, to come over and help teach, and, uh, to show up on the first and second day when they're out there, uh, having to do all their PT and running, and, uh, uh, so, it's, it was good, they actually had two transports this morning through, luckily it wasn't our cadets, but we had a couple others that we transported, but having Sloan on site and having his help has been tremendous, so. And we hope as we go through this year, not only can we do the law enforcement side, but at some point, we will start working with, uh, the Fire Academy, uh, out of Forsyth, and, and getting them to, uh, maybe teach some, uh, weekend classes and, and some other things, so.
Wow.
But hopefully we can get started on that this year, so.
And, and also, uh, speaking of training, we're gonna go back to animal shelters for a second, that two young ladies there have taken the first section of training for animal control officers, uh, they have got two more, two more to do, we're trying to, uh, locate some local, I don't know why they have them here, they have them in Kentucky, Arizona, um, but we're trying to, trying to focus them here where they can have, get the rest of their training here, but they already made it through the first class and did well, both of them made through the first classes as animal control officers, so that's, uh, that has been completed, and they're looking at their phase two, and then I think there's three, three phases they've gotta do on that, so that, that's working well here for Pickens County. Anybody got any, any others? Well, all right, you guys be safe, don't get wet outside.